Good evening. The September 9th, 2025 special meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. Marrying and modeling the way our students begin each day, I ask that we observe a moment of silence at this time. Please join me. Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Throer. Would you read our board commitment statement?
Good evening, Chair Conrad. Absolutely. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Ms. Throer. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Good morning. Good evening, Ms. Martinez Young. Would you please call the roll?
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1. Mrs. Lori Conrad, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Danielle Brewer, Interim Superintendent.
Here.
And Attorney Susan Green.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez Young. Would you please join me in standing for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Dr. Brewer. I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, good evening. I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 9th special school board meeting. With the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Three, zero. Ms. Martinez Young, please provide the proof of publication.
The notice for the September 9th, 2025 special school board meeting was published in the Ocala Gazette on August 29th, 2025. Proof of publication has been attached in board ducks under proof of publication.
Thank you. The purpose of the meeting is to hold public hearings on the final millages and budget for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. The budget process involves public hearings to be held in the following order. A. Rolled back rate computation and tentative budget amend to conform to final budget. B. Resolution determining revenues and millages levied, resolution number 25-11, and C. Resolution adopting final budget, resolution number 25-12. If you wish to address the board regarding one of the public hearings, there's a special form to be completed on which you will need to select the appropriate area or areas of concern. I now recognize the attorney to address the rules governing this special school board meeting. Good evening, Mrs. Green.
Thank you. In compliance with Section 286-0114 of the Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either with regard to one of today's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard at the school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures are available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:10 p.m. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and also spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice from me to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and provanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comment, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. A speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board requirements. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Ms. Martinez Young, do we have any speakers this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair. Dana Coffin.
Hi. My name's Dana Coffin. I'm from 150 West Highway, 329 Citra, Florida. I'm here to address the increase in the property taxes and what that's going on. Just kind of, I know everyone's saying that our populations are increasing, student populations increasing. It is increasing, but it's nowhere near increasing the amount that actual population increased. Before pre-COVID numbers to end of 2024, our total population in Marion County is about 69,000. The student population is around 2,700. Now, that doesn't even account for, the 2,700 doesn't even account for people that were actually born here during COVID because they'll be entering school now. So that number means that our school population in the public school system is actually declining. And I know where they're going because they're all going to the private school system because you cannot get in there. And they're going there because the public school system is not being maintained. And at the same time, you're asking taxpayers repeatedly to pay more and more for a declining product. I'm very passionate about my child's education. My children go to a private school, but I can also tell you what is going on at their public school on every grade level because I want desperately to put them in one, but I will not sacrifice their education to do so. If I had put my now 13-year-old daughter in the school on District 4 in kindergarten, she wouldn't have had a teacher for two months. They didn't have a teacher for two months, and then they went through three that year. Followed up in first grade, she would have had two different teachers. That's not sustainable education. My youngest, who's now seven, if she had started first grade in the school she's District 4 right down the road, which I would love to send her to, she would have walked into a classroom of more than 30 students. Four aren't potty-trained, four cannot speak English or understand it, and only nine are reading at grade level. That's how much I research my child's education because I want to use your system, but it doesn't work. There is value in the public school system, but it's not sustainable to keep asking the taxpayers for more money when the product is failing the students. Those nine students that are in that classroom she's supposed to be in, in my district, that can read at grade level, how do you think they're going to perform every day when their teacher is literally having someone not potty-trained wet their pants in their classroom every day, and it's allowed to continue? That's not sustainable education. And that's not just her classroom. That's not a one-off. It took a veteran teacher going to that school threatening to quit before that problem was addressed with the class size. It's not sustainable, and it's really ignorant to keep asking the taxpayers to keep funding something that is failing our student population. We're at capacity, but we've got 33% that are in the red on your pie chart that are chronically not even there. Our graduation rate is like 67, 70%. Our reading levels are at 47%. Same with math. I want to use your system, but you guys have to acknowledge asking for more money for a system that's not performing is not sustainable, and it's really disrespectful to the taxpayers that are also working to pay bills. I pay to send my kids to private school. My husband and I are sacrificing to do that because the schools in our district are not performing up to standards. And him and I went to all of them, and we support them. We donate to them. We are very involved in our local schools. We just can't use them. And asking us as taxpayers to pay more and more every year for something that we can't even use is really disgusting and not sustainable. And I'm not the only one that feels like this. You guys can look at the enrollment numbers yourselves. All across Florida, everyone is reporting their school systems. Admissions this year are dropping. Hillsborough is shutting down, what, 30-plus schools this year? Because their population's declining. Just because people send their kids to private schools doesn't mean they don't want to use your schools. But we will not use these schools if they're not up to standards in order to prepare our children for what they need to do. I'm not sacrificing that for my kids. I want to use your system. It needs to be fixed. Money's not going to fix it. There are no consequences. There's no repercussions for actions. I'm sorry, if you are not potty-trained by the age of six, you should not be allowed in a classroom. It's disrupting. I don't think there's anyone that's going to argue with that. It shouldn't be allowed. That's just basic. We can start with fighting, and you're not allowed to do three strikes anymore. That's the problem at the middle school that I'm zoned for. No consequences has let the education system fall completely apart. Thank you for your time.
No other speakers, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before proceeding, the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget hearings, we need to finalize the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. May I have a motion to approve the final budget resolution, number 10, for the fiscal year 2024-2025?
Motion to approve the final budget resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Throer.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Four, zero. May I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report for the year ending June 2025? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Throer. Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Four, zero. The chair recognizes interim superintendent Dr. Brewer to begin the budget public hearing process. Good evening, Dr. Brewer.
Good evening. The total millage to be levied is greater than the rolled back rate by 5.64%. The required local effort millage rate is greater than the rolled back rate by 5.59%. Each school board participating in the state allocation of funds for the current operation of schools must levy the millage set for its required local effort from property taxes. As a result of work sessions held by the board since the adoption of the tentative budget of $1,285,332,143 on July 29th, 2025, the following changes have been made and have been incorporated into the proposed final budget. Major changes. Net increase and decrease in revenue due to, in the general fund operating, transfers from capital projects for portable leases, and adult education, MTC workforce development grant, Cape funds, career and professional education, and the beginning fund balance. In capital projects, PICO grant funds, special revenue, federal Pell Grant, and Title I Unisig. Net increase and decrease in expenditures due to general fund operating, salary and benefit changes, portable leases, auditing contracts, and the general fund adult education, salary and benefits, MTC refurbishment projects, MTC's new mechanics building, Cape funds, career and professional education, MTC workforce development grant, general fund referendum, the charter school allocations, and capital projects, the high school CCC carryover, new elementary school, now-named Ross Prairie carryover, new elementary school, Winding Oaks carryover, the new Osceola Middle School Gymnasium carryover, the Donnellan High School HVAC carryover, and other carryover projects. And the special revenue for food services, salary and benefits, farm-to-school hub, freezer-cooler projects, additional food costs, and in special revenue, other, Title I Unisig, federal Pell Grants, other miscellaneous grants. Changes in fund balance due to the actual revenue and expenditures recorded in July for the prior fiscal year. The following attachments have been added to the rolled back computation. The memo changes from tentative to final budget, the certification and compliance, public hearing certification, fiscal year 2025-2026 final budget publication to be published on Marion County Public website on September 10th, 2025.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board amend the adopted tentative budget to conform to the proposed final budget for the fiscal year 2025-2026? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Dr. James, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Throer. This is a public hearing. Does anybody wish to address the board concerning the rolled back rate and/or the amended tentative budget?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Do you have someone in the audience?
Okay, hold on just a minute. Ma'am, I'd like to request if you will get a green form. It's out in the front, and submit that so we'll have your name, and then you can come to the podium. Because I'm not going to be able to hear you from back there. Kevin, do you have a form?
First of all.
Okay, thank you. Would you grab two, I think. Thank you so much, Mr. Christian.
My name is Patricia Williams. I am from Pennsylvania. We are new residents here. You've already stolen from us when we brought two cars here. We had four. We got rid of two because I had one that I had to give up because you charged us $500. Where's that money going? Okay, last year, my taxes here, and I haven't been here a year. My taxes were $2,397.73. You want to move that up to $4,107.39. I also have a residence in Summerfield because I have a handicapped grandson and I have a very sick daughter that's going to be living there. She's actually on her way here as we speak. She is going to be going into dialysis. You are stealing from people that don't have the money to give to you. You have to bring that into some of your attention. And for, you know, I don't know, where's this money going? It was not this bad in Pennsylvania. And we had a lot more residents. We had a lot better school system, from my understanding, from me hearing what everybody else is saying about your school system. And I am, we are forced to put our grand, my grandson, which will be 16, he'll be in high school, 11th grade. We are forced to put him in public school because we can't afford anything more. We may have to give up one of our homes here and live with them in a two-bedroom house. That's going to be impossible. You have to think about the seniors, and if the seniors aren't going to speak up, I am.
Thank you very much, Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, would you grab a green card for Mr. Christian? Thank you.
My name is Pam Garbig, G-A-R-B-I-G. I live in Citra. And I apologize for not knowing the protocol on being able to speak. But when I saw my tax bill and I told my husband, I said, "This is getting ridiculous." We are seniors, and our income is Social Security and a little bit of rental income from some rental properties, and we don't have the income that we used to. We have no children in school, so I apologize for not knowing the in and outs of the school system here. But there's got to be some sort of exemption for seniors that don't have kids in school. For instance, this Save Our Homes portability, non-exemption 10% cap benefit, or other exemptions that seniors that now have a reduced income, that their properties are paid for, but we're just getting killed with taxes. And like I said, I agree with that woman. She's very upset. Florida is, used to be a very reasonably priced state. The wages are not that much, but the cost of living here is getting so high, and the pay is not equalizing the amount of money it costs to buy things today. And when you're on a limited income and you got your property paid for, and then your taxes just keep going up and up and up, there's got to be some sort of way to help the seniors that are on limited income because we don't have the income that I used to. I usually never even looked at these. I just paid them. But now that I have to budget my money and I've got the other rental properties that I can't homestead, there's got to be some sort of relief for the seniors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chair, I was hopeful that maybe we could provide a little context for how much we can control with the rate. And I know board member, I don't want to put you on the spot, but board member Throer's done a good job of explaining it before. But I would give it to Dr. Campbell if she were here. But we are, and I'll give to another board member if we can just maybe share a little context. But the only, the only reason it is more is because the property value increased, which is not, we don't own that. As the school board, we have a fixed rate. There is, and maybe one of our employees could come forward and share. Mr. Rios Welcher, Ms. Kayla could come forward, but we have no control over that rate at all. That is a property value increase that you're then seeing on your tax bill. There's nothing... Yes, ma'am. So what I would say is that this is more of a formality. But we have no control over the rate as it's being implemented. And so exemptions and those other things are for the county commission, the property appraiser. Those are things outside of the scope of what we can control as the school board.
Is that where I would need to go to petition to see if I qualify for an exemption based on income compared to, for seniors and non-homesteaded property or increasing the homesteaded? The state of Texas has indicated for seniors that the homestead has gone up as well as the...
Yes, yes, ma'am. So, yes, ma'am. And so, I'm sorry, Chair, this, I just, I want everyone in the audience to understand that there's nothing we can do about the rate that is set on your tax bill because that is beyond the scope of the work of the school board. Oh, yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Yes. So the property appraiser, the property appraiser and the tax collector in the county commission's office would be an office in the community. Their compound is, it's all very conveniently located together, and they would be able to provide context about exemptions and ways to capitalize on how to save the most money on your tax bill. So I just wanted to provide that context since I know we have a couple of people in the audience who are new to Florida, and Florida system is a little bit different than in other states. So, sorry, Chair, for taking that.
I'll add one comment to that. We've had several work sessions, spent a lot of time going over the budget and what goes into the budget. So I'd encourage you, it's available on YouTube if you'd like to go back and watch. I think, Mr. Welch, we've had three meetings on, three work sessions on the budget and how it comes together and what is, what it's spent on. So with that, we'll move on. Thank you, Dr. James. Would we have one more speaker, Ms. Martinez, or that was it?
I don't have any more forms.
Okay.
Okay, you ready?
We need to vote.
The, oh.
Tom Reese. Does this body deal with the millage relative to property taxes? Because it's fairly clearly here. My major question is how can the market value of your home fall and the taxes relative to mileage rise? It doesn't make any sense to me. If your property value decreases, how can the property tax on the millage increase?
We have a staff, Mr. Welch, would you mind answering his question?
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, members of the community, and interim superintendent Brewer. Thank you for the questions. These questions are very complicated in nature, and we understand and anticipated that there would certainly be quite a few questions today, given that the tax bills just went out. I would like to say that to the gentleman's question regarding increased millage rates as it relates to maybe decreased property value, that it is on a case-by-case basis and looking at how the county tax assessor assesses property value, and that the millage rate is what it is. However, that's not necessarily going to be indicative of how an individual property owner is going to be impacted by that rate. And so there's going to be a lot of variance in that depending on what part of the county that you live in. And so we understand that it's a very sensitive topic, but we are committed to spending the resources that the taxpayers are providing to the school district in a prudent and efficient manner. I hope that goes some way. And I also would like to direct members of the community, as the chair Conrad mentioned, to YouTube and the other resources that we have available so that the community can do a deep dive and educate themselves on some of these previous work sessions that we've had, and a lot of community members have participated in in the past.
Thank you so much, Mr. Welch. We appreciate you coming forward to speak. Do we have any other speakers at this time? Okay, have you filled out a green form, ma'am? Okay, if you could please grab one? If you, if you are planning on speaking anytime during this meeting, there are green forms available in the lobby. It would help us out greatly if you'd go ahead and fill those out and turn them in so we can keep this session rolling.
I apologize. I was tardy this evening due to the rain and traffic.
Yeah, that's okay. We're happy to see you anyway.
I just wanted to be clear. Is this board, well, this, is this, you mentioned that you don't have any control over the rates. Does this board not set the millage rates for the public school taxes?
It's assigned on the difference, correct?
Who determines the millage rates for the public school taxes?
I would defer to our CFO to give specific, specific items. So the reason that we're seeing an increase is not because of a rate we set because essentially the state neutralizes that rate, but because of property value increase.
Dr. James, if I may, I think these questions need to be directed to staff to follow up because this is not supposed to be a question-answer portion of our meeting.
Well, my comments are irrelevant if you don't yourself vote. Are you voting tonight on the higher millage rate versus the rollback millage rate that was listed on the trim notices? Is that, that is what you'll be voting on? Is that correct?
Yes.
You can give, you can give comments, but we can't, we're not supposed to participate in a dialogue.
Okay.
It's present, you present your concerns to us, and then a staff member will walk with you to the back of the room. They'll answer your questions so we can move on to the next presentation.
My general comments then are just that I, I also attended the meeting at the county supervisors, the county supervisors' meeting last week, and they had very similar statements to what you all are saying, that they really don't have any, they're not raising the millage rates. They're just voting to keep the millage rates where they were rather than going back to the rollback rates. Also, please see the county appraiser to talk about the higher appraisal rates. I just want to make sure that each of you, as I was attempting to make sure that each of the county commissioners is aware that the situation that Marion County is in where property rates or property values have been... property rates or property values have increased dramatically, and at the same time, millage rates continue to be voted at or at higher rates than they have been previously, rather than going to roll back rates, is creating an unsustainable situation for property owners in the community. I haven't talked to a single neighbor or a single member of the community who has not had to make difficult decisions about their own personal household budgets this year, very difficult decisions. And we can see and observe that there are property values cooling and lowering in the county as well. In the early two thousands, I was a property owner in Virginia Beach, Virginia, and property values there at the time were doing very much what they've been doing here in Marion County the last several years. And as a result, the, the taxes, the tax base grew rapidly, and the response of the local government to that rapid increase in the tax base, simply due to the higher values of homes, was to lower millage rates. And that ended up being a very prescient, very intelligent thing to do, because when the market cooled and property values started decreasing, the, the market in that area made a swifter recovery than other area governments who chose to seize the moment and increase, continue to vote on higher millage rates in tangent, in tandem with the increased property values. So that, that community wasn't hit as hard as a lot of the other communities when the inevitable business cycle of falling home values occurred. They were able to better recover, their schools stayed in better shape, they were better able to handle their budgets. So that's what I would like to do, is to just educate everyone who has the power to be voting on these millage rates, that you need to look around at the community, observe that households are making huge cuts right now. They're reining it in, and I would urge our local government to do the same.
Ma'am, for the record, if you could please state your name and spell your...
Sure. My name is Marissa Nance, my last name is N-A-N-C-E.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Ms. Martinez Young, did you receive any more?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion from the board?
Not right now.
Okay. Ms. Thrower?
Just something that I wanted to share. The budget is huge, and it is complicated, and when people get their tax bills, that's when they're going to see it and then begin to feel it. We have a part in that. I also wanted to make sure I pointed out that within our budget, at least fifty million of it is just passed through, which makes our budget look larger than, than it is, obviously. And secondly, Florida is still way near the bottom in salaries, and our budget is seventy percent salaries and benefits, and we're still nowhere close to being able to pay our fantastic teachers and everyone else, truly what they deserve, to be able to do what they need to do in their households. Everyone sitting up here, that includes me, is a taxpayer as well. So I'll just say for myself, I'm not happy about this, there's a lot I agree with, with what I just heard, but my conundrum is making sure that we stay competitive wage-wise and be able to still pay our bills, have healthy reserves, and keep everything rolling. So those are my comments. I intend to vote for this budget tonight, but I agree that as we move forward as a community, we have got to get a lot more serious, real, and have conversations a lot earlier with the community on how it's impacting. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Dr. James, you still waiting? Reverend Cummings, did you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
No.
Okay, thank you. Board will call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion passes four, zero. Dr. Brewer, I turn it back over to you.
The school board of Marion County, Florida proposes a total millage rate of six point three two zero, which is greater than the roll back rate of five point nine eight two three, mills by five point six four percent. I recommend that the board adopt Resolution 2511, Determining Revenue and Millages to Be Levied for Fiscal Year 2025-2026.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt Resolution 25-11, Determining Revenues and Millages Levied for Fiscal Year 25-26? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. James. Second by Reverend Cummings. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the millages? Ms. Martinez, do we have any papers for, to speak on millages?
No, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you. Seeing none? Yes, discussion for the board? Any discussion for the board?
Yep. I would just say, it's, it's already been said.
Very good. All right, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Passes four, zero.
I recommend the board adopt Resolution 2512, Affirming the Final Budget for Fiscal Year 25-26, 2025-2026, in the amount of one billion, three hundred eleven million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Thank you, Dr. Brewer. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation that the board adopt Resolution 25-12, Affirming the Final Budget for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, in the amount of one billion, three hundred eleven million, eight hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. James. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the board concerning the final budget?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes four, zero. May I have a motion to acknowledge, receipt, and approve the annual financial report for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, 2025? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Financial report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Thrower, and a second from Reverend Cummings. Board, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes four, zero. There being no further business at this time, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Thrower. Thank you, Reverend Cummings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes... Did you say aye? Four, four, zero. This meeting is adjourned at five thirty-nine. Thank you, Reverend Cummings.